Are you all ready, Glenn?
Yep. I'm surprised more people. All right, we're back in session after the tour and we'll go now to agenda item number two, which is Clean and Green Jacksonville update.
Just being members of council, thank you very much for walking with us around the Center for Public Safety. As you saw in that tour, we are now to the point where the building is dried in. We have sheet rock going in and we are still on schedule for a May to June occupation of that facility. The second thing on your workshop today has to do with a Clean and Green update. In August, September, I made a report to the Advisory Board, Environmental and Appearance Advisory Board. Several of you have asked if we could make that same presentation to the city council. Over the last several workshops, we've not had time to do that, but what we would like to do is to update you and the public tonight on the landscaping and clean and green improvements. So we're going to go through some slides, many of which you have seen. You know that about a year ago, we began to look at the long-term plan for the four blocks here on Newbridge Street, starting from City Hall going down to the middle school. You'll recall there was a plan to put in a center median with angle parking or to widen the sidewalks, leave angle parking, and put two lanes in the middle. Another option was to put a center median with parallel parking or to put the wider sidewalks with parallel parking. These plans have not yet been finalized, but what we do know is that over the next two or three years, financially, we're going to be challenged to find the money to do this. Our estimate for doing all four blocks is in the vicinity of $500,000. Due to financial issues, we decided it would be prudent to look at a short-term plan, and let me show you why. This is the landscaping that you see along Newbridge Street today. The trees were planted a number of years ago. We had good intentions. However, these good intentions don't represent what this city stands for. So in a recent visit to Morehead City, I happened to see what they were doing there, and what they have done is to simply take some of their sidewalks and put in much larger landscaped areas. So by moving from the little sections which you can see on the left, which are basically four-by-four openings in the concrete, and going to a much larger opening, you're able to have trees and landscaping that really improve the appearance. So the short-term plan has been drawn up by your horticulturist, Kate Perkins. It basically revolves around red crape myrtles and then nandinas. Why do we pick nandinas? Because they are green or red year-round. They're not a bush that loses its leaves. So we will be going to a system that looks like this. These have actually been installed directly across from City Hall. The merchants in that area, as I've talked to them, are very pleased with this, and we'll be installing another five to seven of these islands or landscape planner areas within the next two to three weeks. You can see we're using the brick chips. While the brick chips cost more initially, you do not have to replace them, nor do you have the problem of them washing out into the street in heavy rain. So with this, you're going to have good percolation. We believe that you're going to have good life of the nandinas which you see in this area. And again, we're moving from this concept to this concept. While it's not everything we would like to do to beautify downtown, I think you would agree that moving from this to this is a step in the right direction. The other thing that's nice about this, although the city employees are doing the labor, which is a cost, each of these beds costs less than $500. We are buying a large stock, as you can see, in the crape myrtle that's there. We're not buying small stock, and through Ron's purchasing powers, we're buying about 40 of these, which is a full truckload, and over the next several months, we'll be installing them down all of Newbridge Street, all the way down to the middle school facility. Any questions on, let me go back, any questions on what we're doing here?
We can do the same thing on our side?
Yes, sir. One of the things, if you notice in the background of this picture, we do have some nice landscaping there, but those trees have been in place for seven years, and they really have not been what we hoped they would be. So they will be coming out, and then there'll be a repeating pattern that will generally mirror up what we're doing on the opposite side of the street. This entire block should be finished by Thanksgiving. The streetscape partnership with the DOT. Anthony Prentz is to be given a lot of credit with this, along with the MPO and the technical committees, citizen committees we have here. This is the intersection of Seventeen, and then, of course, the dark paving is Johnson Boulevard, and you can see Cheney. Let's talk about some improvements that we're doing at that particular intersection. You know that currently, on the Johnson Boulevard side, we have some absolutely beautiful landscaping. What you'll also find, though, is out in the traveling way, we have some less-than-beautiful medians. These are medians that were installed years ago. They're asphalt. While we did some improvement on one side, we found that was very limited, so the DOT has given us a grant. The city will be responsible for maintaining it, but these islands, which now look like, if I can go back to, these islands that now look like this, by the end of March, early April, they're going to be very nicely planted. You will have once again crape myrtles and low-maintenance plants. You'll also notice that in the design of this, we have put chips and stones on the edge next to the curbing. The curbing that's out there today is asphalt that will be dug up, and proper curbing with concrete will be installed. So what you find in many communities, we're finally bringing to downtown Jacksonville, and that's proper quality landscaping. The reason why we're putting in stone at the edge is to hold down any wash from vegetation. It'll also give a wash into the street from any leaves and things, and it'll also give us good percolation. You know that down at the area of where Cheney and Seventeen are, we've already done about three years ago, a landscape improvement plan there, where we dug that out of old asphalt and put in brick chips. We have found this to be very tolerant to the heat with the rocks and the, what we'll call the more arid landscaping. One or two times, we've had trucks hit one of the big pots, but overall, that landscaping has worked very well. We've now moved up quite a ways. At the left-hand edge of the oval is the Dairy Queen. I know none of you visit that, but I have to admit, my wife and I do from time to time. On the far-right-hand side of the slide is where you have the entrance to the public works compound. In this area, we have some nice landscaping, but the DOT has agreed that over the next two years, they're going to work with us to improve that landscaping. So a lot of the grass that you have there is going to be replaced with nice, low-maintenance landscaping. This is what we hope to have within two years in that zone. Again, immediately on the left is the Dairy Queen. You can see the installation of much more flowering bushes that will really improve the landscaping along that area. Now, this is an area that you will notice, it is between the bridges. This is where your Jacksonville Landing is going to go. You'll notice Old Bridge Street, and you'll notice Marine Boulevard. At that location, we're going to be doing a number of improvements, one of which is to improve our signage. We installed landscaping several years ago, but we did not install a watering system. If you're going to go to the expense of putting in landscaping, you need to have an irrigation system. So we're going to be putting in irrigation here. And back in the area closer to the Exxon Station, you will notice that there is currently a "Welcome to Jacksonville" sign. Those signs have been here a number of years. What we hope to go to is something like this. This is a project that you will see in the upcoming budget. It's not overly expensive, and we hope that this will be a new feature. It's not intended to be the gateway of the city, as far as the city limits. It is intended to be the gateway to the downtown. And when you combine this with the facility that you're going to be building right next door, and the other landscaping that you're going to be putting in, you'll be substantially improving that gateway. You can see the type of median improvement. Now, this is the long median that is in the area where it says Old Bridge and Marine South. You will know that there is a long concrete median that is just broken up. It's kind of in front of Angie's. It is in that zone coming back to the fork between Old Bridge and Seventeen. That is, if you pardon the expression, a disgrace. We are digging it out, and you'll have, once again, crape myrtles, nandinas, low-maintenance plants put in that area. Down at the DOT headquarters, where we get the driver's license and you have the maintenance facility, the DOT is doing a project that will improve the circulation from Seventeen getting onto the bypass. What you will find there in this zone, this is not a city-requested project, but it's a DOT project, you're going to see a lot of the landscaping that's in there today, which is very pretty. You're going to see it taken out. And the reason why it's taken out is because of this intersection. This is an intersection that is high-volume, especially when you're coming from the base and you're turning towards the bypass. What is going to go in, in its place, will be a skewed intersection where the lanes that will turn will actually have a substantial separation. That way, you can actually see better around cars that are waiting to turn in the other direction. So for example, on the far-left-hand side, if you're coming from the bypass and you're trying to, or coming from Seventeen and trying to get back to the bypass, you now will have the cars offset, and then the DOT will be re-landscaping this area. There is a blue, what's the term?
Blue star.
Blue star marker in that location. That will be relocated, and we're currently working with the DOT to determine exactly where it will go. On Johnson Boulevard, you remember that not too long ago, you had a road system that looked like this, six lanes of asphalt. At one time, that was needed. It is no longer needed due to the bypass being installed, so the DOT worked with us on something called a road diet, and you can see the change. Six lanes of traffic went to four lanes of traffic, bicycle paths on the outside, and then they left the center area. The center area will be for turning, and in the future, we will be able to install landscape islands along Johnson Boulevard. Now, that's certainly not in your five-year capital improvement program, but a future council, a future staff will be working with the DOT to try to get that in. And there, of course, is the landscaping. You saw how quickly it grows. And of course, here's what you have today with the turn lanes, and that's where your future landscaping will go. This is the area immediately adjacent to the downtown entranceway. You will notice on the far-left, the circle is the Freedom Fountain. You will notice at the bottom, that's the Military Cemetery. Let's talk about what's going to happen in the long median that is in front of Brood Awakening. This area, the DOT has given us a $55,000 grant. We are going to be digging that up, and there's a picture of the beautiful, worn-out concrete. Once again, the median there is simply a poured concrete on top of asphalt. We will be digging that out, and this is what will go in its place. The key to this, though, are the five military flags that will go in. If you'll remember, one of the components of the Freedom Fountain was to have a connection between the Memorial Gardens and the Freedom Fountain. That connection was to be made by the installation of the five military flags. The red areas with the black dot, that represents poured concrete. All of that will be, the current island will be completely dug up, a proper concrete curb installed, proper landscaping. This will also be finished by the spring. So just to review from a landscaping standpoint, downtown by spring, you're going to have at Johnson and Seventeen new landscape islands. You're going to have at the other end of the bridge, a new landscape island, all installed. And here, coming into downtown, you will have beautiful landscaping. Major step to improve the quality and appearance of downtown. Jacksonville Landing. Once again, you have Old Bridge Street on the bottom, Seventeen on the top. We have been informed by the, by the Wildlife Commission, thank you. In Florida, it's called the Fish and Wildlife. Here, I think we call it, what, John, just the Wildlife Commission? Okay. That this project is on schedule. The money was saved in the budget by Representative Cleveland, Shepherd, and Senator Brown, so we're fortunate of that, and this project is on go. It's another artist rendering of it. You can see the three launches, and you can see the multitude of landscaping. Remember again, our obligation as a city is that once this is built, it must stay permanently as a recreation area. The other thing is it cannot be closed. It's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's part of our agreement. And then the other part is the city's responsible for the maintenance of it. One of the components that you will remember of the bridge is that both ends of the bridge have the potential for a future boardwalk to go under. The permitting of the Jacksonville Landing will take, the permitting will allow the boardwalk to go over towards the Venter's property. I will say to you that we're very pleased to tell you and the public that Mr. Vinters has agreed to tear down Fisherman's Wharf. He is currently getting bids. We hope that within the next 60 to 90 days, Fisherman's Wharf will be removed from that property. He's very, very positive about working. John's got a great relationship with him, and we're just very pleased that he is moving forward on that. Downtown, the painting program. I will tell you, the public-private partnership which Lily came up with for the painting program, where we said to the property owner, "You buy the paint, we'll find volunteers to paint it." It has worked. This is the first building that was finished. It's generally at the corner of Railroad and Court Street. It was white, and you can see the extremely fine paint job that the volunteers did. Hunter Hadley stepped up. This is the building directly across from the Railroad Depot. Hunter Hadley stepped up and said, "You know, that's not my property, but I'm willing to help." And he actually paid for all of the paint and hired a professional painter to come in and paint that. And you can see, once again, it has a real, if you saw it before, which many of you did, you can see the improvement. Now, we have two council members who serve with two of the county commissioners, Barbara Eichner and Chairman Buchanan, worked with Mr. Lazara and Mr. Willingham. And I'll remind you of some of the visioning things that they talked about doing. One of them was at this intersection, seeing what we could do to reopen the road system or improve the landscaping and maybe turn it into a pedestrian mall. Those decisions are things you all are going to be making in the next several months, along with the county commission. One of the things we also talked about on the same street, though, was could we possibly create a square downtown? So if the buildings which are there on the left of this picture could be removed, and you could create a downtown square across from the old courthouse, what a phenomenal change you would have. Court Street today, potential Court Street tomorrow. Another thing was to improve the pedestrian safety. Barbara Eichner especially spoke about this, and the rest of the committee agreed. If we could possibly take some of the areas and improve landscaping and pedestrian safety, this is what you have today, this is what you could have tomorrow. Here's an interesting thing that you may not even realize. All of those power lines on Court Street, they do not serve a single business on Court Street. The electricity to those buildings are from the rear. If we can take those down, look at the visual change that would occur by just taking them down. Now, just taking them down comes with a cost. That is almost a $400,000 project, and the unfortunate thing is that Duke Power does not have a payment plan. If that's ever to occur, the city is going to have to find a way of funding that, or the city and county together. But look at what your potential is. The county did a great job on their side of the street with landscaping. If you could move from this and notice, not only the poles gone, but look at how much wider and you could put in landscaping. You could then have dining out on the sidewalk in front of Courthouse Cafe. Again, a whole series of things that we'd like to do in downtown. Here's the concept of creating a square. If you'll notice the building directly across from the courthouse, if you were able to take that and turn that into a square someday. Now, these are dreams. This is vision. We also know, though, that if you don't have a vision, you'll never fulfill the dream. So these are things that someday, we hope the city and the county can work together to accomplish. Here is one of the greatest things, though, that we can do. This is the waterfront. I remember in one of our committee meetings, Barbara Eichner said, "Cars don't care where they park. They don't need a water view." So if we could turn this into this, what a phenomenal change it would have to downtown Jacksonville. Now, this is the presentation which we gave to the Environmental and Appearance Committee. They are to be congratulated on contributing a lot of ideas to this. So we wanted to give the council a quick overview. Any discussion and comments that you may have, I will tell you, in next year's budget, there's going to be very little money to do these type things. We know what we're going to be facing next year with the budget. But in your five-year capital improvement program, which you'll be getting Ron in January, February?
Yeah, in January, beginning of February.
Some of these ideas will be in there, but not necessarily in the first year. Ron has helped on this, and so has John. Do y'all have anything you want to add?
I don't.
Great presentation.
John and I had the opportunity to go on a little tour in Hickory. Was very impressed with what they had been able to do with all their old mills and some of their buildings down there. They, the young fellow that was, I guess, heading up their Economic Development slash Community Development Program was very innovative in searching out opportunities for them to receive funding. And I know on some of those buildings, they have been declared... And I know on some of those buildings, they have been declared National Historic, were on the Historic Registry. Is that correct, John? And they were able to get money, grants to redo those buildings, as long as they didn't change the historic value of the building. And there's several of them, really nice, I mean, really nice places they turned them into. And I'm just curious if, you know, I know that one slide that you showed takes out that old Masonic building or anything. Is there any way that, you know, I know that a lot of the buildings down there probably don't qualify, but, you know, what qualifies one for the historic designation?
Well, one of the things I got from the tour was that there is a particular, specific grant funds for old mills. Again, cotton mills, et cetera, et cetera, that were so important to the economic structure of the Piedmont and to that area of the state, are no longer. They've been, jobs moved overseas and other places, and so you have a lot of these abandoned mills. And so one of the resources that they had was specifically designated for old mills. And as the mayor said, we went into at least one or two that just were, they took the structure itself, changed it into restaurants, a meeting hall where they'd had, one of them was several events and so forth. But, you know, we can certainly look in and more and more to that opportunity, what grants may be available. But that was, a lot of it was unique to that mill area, a mill.
Also, the loan program that we had in place at one time, I'm assuming that that's still available to anyone that wanted to come down and renovate or start up a business in downtown Jacksonville, correct? Do we still have that in place?
Actually, Mayor, I don't believe we do. The, at one time, the local banks had put together, I apologize. At one time, the local banks had put together a pool of money. It's not something that I've checked into, but I promise you, I will check into that this week and find out if we can reactivate that program.
Well, the thing about, when I'm thinking about that, I think about some of the opportunities that will probably come available in the next few years, such as when we do relocate the boating facility to the other side of the river. What's going to happen down there? Is there going to be money opportunities for people who want to start up a new business, you know? Is that going to be available?
I've got something. The First Bank of Onslow, the Masonic Lodge, and which had, and another building which had been an Amen store, are something from the past, have been on the Bank of Onslow and the Masonic Lodge were registered on the National Register in the 70s, I believe, with Hathaway Price and people from North, from Raleigh. Those are buildings that you need to think twice about taking down. That was shown in that list, business with an entire green facing the, facing the old courthouse. That is enhancement, I agree. But you also need to think about where, what you're doing with your history, being involved with the Historical Society, and having been involved with the Architectural Survey of the County. I would object.
But Al, I think you would agree that even though that's a concept, if you left those buildings, you could still accomplish the vast majority of that square. And again, no one should take the position that the city is suggesting that they all come down, or that this is just a concept. But certainly, we could accommodate those buildings staying with the rest of the block becoming a very nice part.
Yeah, there are certain.
He asked what qualifies a building as being historic on the Historic Registry.
That took a lot to get them on the registry. And those buildings, plus some of the others that are downtown, need to be considered when you're discussing enhancement as well. Because Jacksonville Downtown District was the largest historic district listed as of the 70s. And it's all dwindling very quickly. Some of it is just what time is doing to those buildings. That I cannot do anything about or say anything about specifically, but it's just a caution on how far you go with improvement and how it's thought of. That's all, that's all I wanted to say.
One of the things that you will see in this particular picture, though, you will notice where Old Bridge and Court cross. You can see the black-roofed building in the gray that are there at that intersection. That is where the Aragonas are currently putting in a new, what I call, complex of small restaurants. And you can also see further down, you know, towards the Bold Facility down that way. But again, a good concept, and we'll be working with the county to see what we can do together to help implement these. Other questions or thoughts? I talked to Jeff Hudson earlier, I'm sorry, today's Tuesday, so it would have been the end of last week. After things, a couple of business items get taken care of by the county, they would like to have the county staff and city staff make a presentation on the joint committee's work. So probably December or January, we'll be making that presentation on what the joint committee has been working on. Other questions?
Richard, you didn't talk about the potential realignment of the road.
That's a good point, and this is a good slide to show it. Both of the previous studies that the county and the city jointly funded talked about the circulation difficulties downtown. You know the circulation system where you have Old Bridge and New Bridge. They simply don't line up. So one of the concepts is to consider, and if, Ron, you or Glenn or somebody can draw on this, what the concept would basically do is it would take the Old Bridge Street, and it would go through those buildings in the upper-right-hand corner and try to line up with Newbridge Street. There is a small cemetery that is there at that corner. You would wrap around that. But that's where that red line, that's one of the concepts we would have. One of the first things that we're recommending the city and county do, and we can fund it through the MPO money, is to do a traffic impact analysis for downtown. We've talked about whether you should re-line that street, realign that street, whether you should make a four-way stop sign or stop intersection at Court and Old Bridge, whether you should reopen Court Street to two-way traffic. All of those things need to be based upon a traffic impact analysis. We'll be recommending that to you and the county commission within the next 30 days or so. Other questions? Comments?
Good work.
And I will also tell you, there's still two other buildings we've gotten approval to paint, so if any of them are available on a Saturday, feel free to come out. All you have to do is have a little bit of skill, not a lot, and we'll help you get some paint. The only requirement is more paint has to go on the building than goes on you. I would also comment that Mr. Thomas recently donated about 10 gallons of paint to the cause, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Mayor, that concludes the items we had in the workshop.
Everybody got anything else? Good presentation. Thank you.
Good work by the staff. Thank you.